Did you get through all this stuff?
No, I glanced through it.
Alman's already made up, so why are you going through it?
Read all of this stuff.
You're all that paperwork. Now you're talking about waste of cash and money. That's right. And that's true there.
Well, yeah.
Just marry him, boy. Yeah, it's hot in here. I'm glad he didn't crowd out there. I thought he had all the ball people show today.
Oh, they read.
Yeah. Yes.
Morning. Craven County Board of Commissioners's regular session for Monday, August 21st is now in session. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Here.
Chairman Mark?
Here.
Could we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, I ask that you bless this board as we seek your help with our affairs this morning as we proceed with the people's business. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of what you have provided us. While we may be of diverse opinion, we wish to understand one another and reach agreement to make the life better for all. Please share your wisdom with us on this blessed day so that we may do what is right for the people of Craven County. Thank you for your blessing. Amen.
All had an opportunity to look over the agenda. Are there any corrections to the agenda? Ditions? There being none, I'd ask for motions.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of August 7th, request to approve 2018 holiday schedule, tax releases and refunds, request for month fest proclamation, request for the national recovery month proclamation, and a budget amendment for the volunteer fire departments. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Yes. It is my pleasure to introduce Megan Doyle Superintendent of Schools, who will ask the board for a request for a resolution to approve a lease for technology equipment. Resolution and the lease will require a roll call vote. Megan Doyle.
Good morning Chairman Mark, Vice Chairman Dacey, and Commissioners. Thank you for having me and a ton of you this morning. You'll see that I'm standing here with a device. Please do not think this is the device that students will be getting. It's a little larger than what students will be receiving, but this is the thing that we are asking you to approve for our students today. As you all know, over the last several years, three to be exact, the Board of Commissioners has appropriated money specifically for technology purchases for our students. As I've had the opportunity to review our funding, review our budget over the last year, one of the things that's become abundantly clear is that our elementary schools have Title I funds, sufficient federal funds to assist them in providing technology for our students as well as additional support through remediation, tutors, and lowering class size. But what happens is because we've designated our Title I funds to our elementary schools, our secondary schools often don't get, and they actually don't, get the same amount of resources. In fact, our secondary schools do not receive any federal Title I funds. The reason for that is because we believe, as a lot of districts, and I would say most districts across this country believe, that federal Title I funds should be allocated towards the primary grades to invest in early literacy. We all know that early literacy is what is going to ensure that our students are successful. And so our elementary schools use those funds and the flexibility that comes with them to make those investments in people, in technology, and curriculum resources. So as a result, we are trying to take the technology resources that have been allocated by the Board of Commissioners to make sure that we can see those tools through graduation. And so in our secondary schools, grade six through 12, we're asking the Board of Commissioners to approve a lease for us to be able to purchase iPads for every student in a traditional school. So our two early colleges already have one-to-one environments. They already have an agreement with the community college for that to happen. So the students who don't have these tools right now, and really the teachers who haven't had access to these resources through these tools, are in grade six through 12, all five of our middle schools and our three traditional high schools. So I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of a demonstration of what we're kind of looking at. So you have two projectors in this room, right? They're probably about $600 each. And I'll defer to the IT director to see if that's actually accurate. But those devices, especially in a classroom, cost a lot of money. And don't get me wrong, these devices cost a lot of money as well. However, you'll see that with this, I can be unchained to that device, to the projector and to the screen, and I can be anywhere in the classroom, as can any of my students if I'm a teacher. So a lot of folks have asked us, why are we choosing a mobile device versus a laptop? Well, quite frankly, a lot of the work that our students are doing is mobile. A lot of the work that you all do is mobile. I would dare to ask, how many of you can control your thermostat at home with your phone? Any of you?
No.
You can? Someone said no. Anyone in the audience? I can control my thermostat with my phone. Anyone use your phone as an alarm clock? Anyone use your phone to control the lights in your house? No, not yet. Okay. So we have lots of folks who are starting to do that. And our phones are becoming not only the way that we control our home environments, but they control our work environments as well. I do a significant amount of my work on the road with my phone, even more than my iPad. And we have environmental health specialists that use tablets in the field to conduct inspections. We have planners who conduct inspections and do, you know, looking at the electrical in a building using tablets or iPads. So our work, the work of the county, and the work that we are sending students to are using mobile devices. In addition, what can be learned in a classroom really kind of limits us. If we can add the outside walls of our schools, outside the walls of our schools, as a place where students can learn with a device that gives us access to the world's resources, then we've really expanded our classroom exponentially. And so that's why we're picking these devices. And I'll tell you, we're picking Apple specifically because of the residual value at the end of our use. We're contemplating and we are asking for a three-year lease, which would mean we would have a three-year replacement cycle. At the end of that replacement cycle, in the packet that I provided to the county manager, it indicates that we would expect to have about $80 to $100 in residual value for those devices, which would allow us to make another down payment on our next refresh or recycling of our devices. So you can see up here that I have your agenda. All right, and you can see a little bit, although it's not, there it goes. It's moving a little bit. Let's see if it moves a lot. So I've just switched to the Adobe file that's got the lease documents here. One of the things that even my principals have challenged us on a little bit is, you know, what can we do with this device? How would this device really help us with instruction? So, and this particular principal, Mr. Wallace, if any of you know, he is the new principal at West Craven High School, he said to me, he said, "Well, you know, you can teach a lot of subjects using a computer, but you can't teach math using a computer." I said, "Oh, really? You can't?" He said, "Just give me a topic, any topic in math, and tell me why I can't teach it." He said, "The Pythagorean theorem. You cannot teach the Pythagorean theorem using a computer." And he made a mistake. So I, in two seconds, found this video online. And the Pythagorean theorem, just a refresher, is a squared plus b squared equals c squared. And it will work for us a little bit. And this is pretty typical of what will happen in a classroom. Little bit of delay. But that's okay. I'll keep going. If you Google in your browser, Pythagorean theorem, in two minutes, you'll come up with a video that will, in two minutes, show the relationship between each of the sides of a triangle. And if you were to make a square out from those sides, how three squared plus four squared equals five squared, as one example of the Pythagorean theorem. And so it would move those squares around. That's what this video shows you, and that's what the power of technology can be in a classroom. I apologize, it worked just two seconds ago, but this is typical. And so we'll just keep moving on. So what I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to approve is a couple of things that I think are really important for the public to know. We are not asking for any additional funds. We are not asking for any additional funds this year, next year, or the following year for the purpose of this lease, okay? In the history that I could find of the county commissioners' allocation to the Board of Education, there's been no reduction in funds, and as long as we were able to continue that, we would be continuing with this lease. It's a 0% lease. It allows us to leverage our funds over a three-year period. It also allows us to purchase all of our devices for all of our students in the first year. Please know that we do not propose to put all these devices in the hands of students next week. In fact, that's not possible because you haven't voted. But we are planning to do it in a measured way, asking the schools that have prepared themselves through training, professional development, also students who have prepared themselves through their own training, and parents who will have to take training as well before devices will ever be put in the hands of students. So every school will have to go through this process of orienting their teachers, orienting their students, and then orienting their parents before they have those devices. In addition, we have a, it might be that I'm not, something went wrong. There we go. Maybe not. So we have a plan for the deployment of these devices. We also have a plan after the fact of auditing to make sure that they are still where we say they are and where the students say they are. In addition, with the device management system that we'll be using, we'll be able to track a device. It will have, it will be a Craven County Schools device. So let's say that we detect that a device has kind of left our service area of Craven County. Then Mr. Beasley can pull that device up, wipe it clean, and reset it to factory settings, and reset it to Craven County Schools operating standards. And so no one can kind of go into it and mess with it. There's certain things that can be added to it. There's flexibility, so a child can add an app to it. That's going to be helpful for their learning. But they can't make whole-scale changes to the infrastructure and the administration rights of the device. There's quite a bit of very elegant management of these devices that we have gotten as a result of choosing iPads that I think are going to make this an invaluable learning tool for us. So I'll take any questions from the Board of Commissioners. We are asking for the approval of the lease, which we do need by general statute. Our board has approved our resolution as of last week. And we are asking the Board of Commissioners to approve that resolution and to allow us to move some of our local funds into capital outlay to make the purchase final.
Before we ask any questions, let's have a motion for a resolution.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Chairman Mark, did you intend for us to just pass that resolution?
Yes, I will, but I figured we'd give a chance for questions.
Okay, I think that there may be, I think we may have just passed it.
Well, the resolution is okay.
Okay, we want to discuss it now.
But we still have to do a roll call vote on the money, on the lease.
I'd just like to say I was under training during, we pulled ass. And I was astounded how they were explaining how computers are so far ahead of our average students. And the new job market is really growing. That a lot of us cannot even enter into it, but I know I can. Computer-wise, I'm not that, computer-wise, my grants are no more valuable than I do. But anyway, they were showing us how for advanced, other students are ahead of our students because of technology and all the different types of equipment they have to bring into training and how these jobs, these real high-tech jobs, we cannot qualify for them. And so I talked to the commissioners, some of the commissioners, and the county manager, what a great class that was, because I really wasn't aware that they were, other students were so far ahead of our students. And we're trying to really educate our kids that we can be the best, that we can really have people looking to us for solution. At this time, I think we are looking, all of us looking to other people for solution. I know, and during, I was actually surprised when they began to show us this technology and tell us how it's being used in our society. So I feel like our kids, the technology such as the computer and the different areas of the computer, I think they deserve the best.
Thank you, sir.
And we need to afford them the best because if they get the best, they're going to be able to help us. I know I'm not computer savvy as some of those young kids now, but not even the technologies, the technology that's in their schools now. And I just can't even, my kids can show me more on our little computer or telephone than I know myself. So I think we need to go forward and do some of these things that's needed for our young people.
Just for the public out there who's read this, and I know everybody read this lease and understood it.
You've got to be kidding.
It's just like, you know.
Grade school.
Your own will. Dr. Doyle brought up a good point, but it may be confusing to you out there that read it. It's 0% interest for this contract or this lease. But in the lease, you'll see a 12% interest charge that relates only to a late charge if you're not paying your bill on time.
That's right.
So don't get confused like I did, thinking, you know, well, you got zero, but then you got 12. So it only relates to your, if you're not paying the bill on time. My only other question, I guess, I didn't see it, I didn't hear you state it. If I did, I just, it went past me. How are you going to handle lost or maliciously damaged? You know, kid gets upset and throws it against the wall and it's gone.
That's a great question. So it will be treated like any other damaged equipment. So if a student maliciously damages a piece of equipment, we will seek to charge them. And we'll take whatever remedies that we have available to us to try to get that. If a child accidentally drops, that's going to happen. So I do want to show you this case so you can see what I'm talking about. And actually, I'll pass it to you right now. It may shut this off. But this is the case that each iPad will come in, and you'll see that part of the order. It is a military-grade case, and it has a cover that's magnetic. And so when it flips over the top, it closes, it turns the device off, but it also protects the glass. There's plastic in the back and the front. The biggest issue we have with devices like this are being dropped, and they get dropped on that corner, and then it shatters the full glass. And so we have a plan to replace glass in-house, as long as it doesn't damage the electronics behind it. But we have provided for about 3% loss, which is pretty standard across the state. We have consulted with and benchmarked with several other counties across the state, to include Rowan Salisbury, Lenore, who has been one-to-one with Apple for a significant amount of time, as well as Green. So we have purchased additional, and we also have in-house tech staff who would help us to take care of that, and will charge students. We will offer optional, let me make sure I say this correctly, optional insurance for parents who want to take that opportunity for their students if they want to say, "Look, I know my kid's going to drop this. We want to go ahead and purchase something in advance." We are going to offer that opportunity for parents. But it's not required for them to take the device at all.
Make sure everybody in the audience understands.
And this by no means takes away the books.
No, sir.
This is just an additional tool out there for the students. And I think the public, and I know the parents are aware of this, but the small amount that we're giving equates to about one book per student of the 7,430 that we're giving these two. Because the average book, an average history book for sixth through 12th grade is $90, which equates to $668,000 for one book. And they're averaging four to five books for that. So it's not a takeaway from, it's an additional tool. And I think we're just giving them more tools, like Mr. Sampson said, to do their job.
Thank you, sir. I would add, I have what is called Khan Academy's YouTube thing, their channel pulled up here. And you can go into Khan Academy, this is just one example, but iTunes U is another very large repository of resources for students. So let's say a student is in physics, and they are struggling with a topic. And obviously, at, you know, 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night, they're not going to interrupt their teacher, and they may not have the access to. They can search that topic on Khan Academy, and they can have access to tons of videos. My daughter, who's at Carolina, uses Khan Academy. Many of our students already use Khan Academy. I see some folks in the audience shaking their head because they use it too. It's also something that you can, if you want to go and fix the engine in a specific car, you can search for that particular car, you can search for how to fix that. As we all know, there are a myriad of resources that are available to us. And this is going to give our students access to that, just walking around without having to go and sit somewhere or go physically to a place to find it.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, will the units themselves be allowed to go home with the children? Yes, so that's part of why the students have to go through training themselves, and the parents have to go through training and sign a release, saying that they understand what the device is that they're getting, what it's worth, and the fact that it will be able to go home with them during that time. Okay. How are we going to ensure that the kid hasn't brought the battery life down to zero? They show up to school the next day? There's going to be a level of expectation that they use the device in the morning, but yet it's not been plugged in overnight? These are great questions. And so part of the agreement that they're going to sign is that they come to school with their device at least 85% charged. But there will also be charging stations in school that they'll be able to use during lunch, during breaks, that kind of thing. Okay. I do have one question about our mechanics here as far as us funding it. Of course, this is a three-year lease. How are we making the money available? Or can it be explained to the public how we're making the money available for future years? Again, it's never been the policy of our board to appropriate the money of future boards. But yet, we're going to provide them with a, okay. I want to have this explained and explained appropriately. So I don't know if Craig or county manager want to do this.
Well, let's do a kind of trilogy here. Why don't you explain to them the general statute that allows them to do this to you?
Yes, the school statutes contemplate a situation like this where there has to be a funding commitment past the fiscal year. And as you know, it's very rare for the board to bind future boards on any kind of expenditure short of a contract. But this is one of the very few exceptions. So the reason why it is before you, at least procedurally, is for you to pass a resolution because that's required for the school to enter to a multi-year lease with the funds committed. So the resolution does, in fact, bind the board to assist the school with this lease for the next three years. It's about the only situation I know where the law allows that.
So the second part of your question is, how do you actually fund it? And with Dr. Doyle on talk, I mean, certainly she's not asking for any additional money than what you traditionally approved of the $750,000 for technology. If there was some really bad situation, you certainly could look other places to make sure that number stayed the same versus that.
Absolutely.
And she can look at other places.
Yes.
And we can work together to make sure we find that middle ground.
Absolutely.
Now, Craig, you did have a part about a transfer.
Yes, right now, it's currently budgeted below current expense. We would need to take those forms and move them over to.
So we'll need a roll call vote on that part.
Basically, yes.
Yes, okay, okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make certain that the people of the county understood how this mechanically would work. Thank you so much. And if I might add, I would like to make sure that we continue to apprise you of how this is progressing in the school system.
Yeah.
And if we had the opportunity to come back before you on a schedule that is established by your manager and the board, just to present how things are progressing, we would like the opportunity to do that.
Good idea.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Welcome to the Board of Education. Glad to have you here, Dr. Doyle. One of the commitments of this board, and I say this board, has been to make sure that we provide increased funding for technology, which this board has done unanimously over the past few budget years. One of the concerns that we've had, though, is adequate IT personnel within-house. I know you got a maintenance agreement and so forth and so on. But it's still every year when we talk about this, you're putting 7,430 devices out in addition to what we already have. Do we have adequate IT staff in-house to handle keeping these devices going each and every day?
I will say that at this point in our history, I don't think any division in the Craven County School System has adequate staff. And that is not the fault of the county commissioners. And we're not attributing any fault. It is just kind of the state of affairs right now of public education. However, Mr. Beasley and I have been in constant contact about what this will mean in terms of their maintenance staff. And I'm going to actually have him come up and speak to that. But he feels very confident. And I will have to say, just as an example, we rolled out 350 devices to Oaks Road Elementary School in the span of a week. We rolled out 1,000 MacBook laptops to our teachers in less than a week. Our IT staff, I'll put them against anybody. Do we have enough? We never have enough. No, sir, I'm not going to say that we will, and I wouldn't stand up here and say that to you. But I think they feel prepared and equipped to be able to assist us. And we also feel prepared and equipped, if there is not enough resources, to be able to shore that up. So I do want to invite him if he has anything else to add.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Dr. Doyle is just being correct. We are short-staffed, but you have my promise. This will work. We will make it work, and we will work it in a very reasonable amount of time. As you said earlier, we turned out over 1,000 devices. And that's not just simply opening up 1,000 devices. That's actually opening up 1,000 devices, applying fixed asset tracking to the devices, and reloading the operating system as a Craven County Schools operating system on each and every device. Folks, I'll put my guys up against anybody. And I'll have to call on Mr. Hulte over here just to, it's just a great team, a great school system to be with. And I feel 100% positive that we can make this work. Could we do it better? Yes, sir, we could, and you know we could. But it would take more folks.
I don't say it's criticism, because I know you're doing all you can. Commissioner Mark and myself, several years ago, took a tour of many schools throughout Craven County. And one of the concerns that we had as we toured was the number of computers that were down. And it's no reflection on you, you were doing all you could. But again, we go back to the discussion each and every year. If we're going to fund this, we also want to make sure that we're funding adequate staff to keep them going, because they're useless if they're not going to be there for our children each and every day. So, you know, I'm not out soliciting that you have additional personnel. But I will say this, you know, I think that we have a responsibility too, to make sure that you keep these devices working. And if we're not doing that, we're not fulfilling our mission, and we need to know about it, you know?
Mr. Jones, I'll add to it. My staff is all getting Apple certified. I have just completed both an iPad and a MacBook certification, as all of my staff has as well. We are looking to do in-house even warranty repairs. But something quite a bit different, this go-around that we've ever had in the past. In the past, it's been a hodgepodge of a little bit from this manufacturer, a model from that manufacturer, a different model from the same manufacturer, and suddenly there was 10 different manufacturers.
20 different model years.
This will be the first time ever that we'll be able to look at the same devices being deployed system-wide. I can't even begin to fathom how much different it's going to be in terms of being able to keep things working. Now, the flip side to that, and I have to add this. Let's just say Mr. Sampson has this device, and he picks up the phone, and he says, "Wayne, I can't do so-and-so." Wayne has the ability on these new management systems to say, "Mr. Sampson, give me just a minute." And I can click a button, and I can reload his operating system in seconds on his device, or refresh it, or push an application, or delete an application. Because we're now getting up to the point of your kindergarten class might need one app today, might need another app tomorrow, and it's all done from a centrally managed management system. So that's something that we've never had before, and it's something going forward. It does make our life much, much easier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Superintendent, being an Apple user, do you have a support agreement with that lease?
Yes. Yes, yes.
So right there, that would be a need to, too.
And we can take that further if we decide, and so that's part of what our process has been. We decided to kind of scale back a little bit of that because of the management, what does MDM stand for? DM is Device Management, but Master Device Management might be what it is. But because of that management system that Mr. Beasley was just talking about, we have scaled some of that back, but we have reserved some resources to upgrade if we need to. So we're going to use this first few months and the first few deployments at different schools to decide how we need to invest a little bit, but that will be on us.
Mr. Chairman, any other questions?
Are these devices going to be expected to be used for homework?
No, because we can't guarantee that every child has Wi-Fi at home. So they might be able to have books, and so one of the things that I want to talk to the manager about is something that we might be able to do with the public library, make sure that every kid has a public library card on their iPad, and they can check out books through our public library, and then they can take those home without having to have Wi-Fi access. That is probably the biggest tool that we would be able to give a child K through 12 is to have that ability to really have a book to read in the evenings, and so that would be a significant help to us. I don't know what that is, I think it actually has to do with Apple TV. It's just a screensaver.
You're tracking.
Because it's not on my device.
Any other questions?
I was just trying to make the comment, I was thinking about the class that I was in, and Durham House, they were talking about, they were even began at an early age, the kids are going to kindergarten school, three, four, five, six-years-old kids, that they would be trained to really take the, take up the ball and travel on when they come up to elementary and grow up to high school, they'd be already grounded in the computer hardware that they need to use. And a lot of it is already done, especially in other places.
And I will say, when we deployed to Oaks Road, the kids were teaching the teachers how to use the device. They already had mastered this tool in some ways way better, and kids who had never seen this device before, within moments, took a picture of themselves, made a video introduction of themselves to share with their classmates, within ten minutes. It really is a simple device, but it really does have a lot of far-reaching uses for our students.
Mr. Chairman, you'll meet a...
We had a motion, and now we need a roll call vote to approve the budget going from us to the school.
It's a motion authorizing County Manager to transfer funds from the operate to the capital, and that would be a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, I just thought of one more quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
I've got an iPad, had it for years, I use it primarily to download books and... Do you foresee that in the future of education?
Yes. If I'm being quite honest, in 2008, the per pupil allocation of textbook funds to Craven County Schools was about $90 per student. It's around $40 per student now. And so that, this device is going to allow us, like I said, with the library, your public library, to begin to download books and check them out in electronic circulation as opposed to physically walking into the library and be able to read books on their iPad. So this tool is not just something kids can create on, it's something they can consume books and other nonfiction texts, manuals, that kind of thing on. Absolutely, yes, sir.
Can you ever see it's a planning regular textbooks?
I'm going to be honest, in some cases, in some schools in our district right now, it probably already is. Not because we want them to not have a physical book in their hand, and our elementary schools all have rich, actual, physical text environments. But for some of our students, you've got kids who only want to use a device like this, and then you still have students who want to use an actual physical text, and we'll always have that option.
But the publishers, do they allow?
They do.
To download, and is it less expensive?
No. No. And so that's part of, I'm going to be honest with you, part of, as we've seen funding decrease in years, for several years, part of the things that our teachers are really doing is creating their own content. We can do that through these tools. We have spent the entire summer investing a lot of our state funds in creating curriculum for our teachers to be able to use, that they can access through their device. And so even though textbook publishers are still making textbooks, they have not stopped feeling very proud about the content in those textbooks and charging us the same amount, whether it's electronic or in paper. Hope that answers your question. Commissioner Tyson?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to believe this, but I am concerned that we are going to, that we could possibly be setting up a situation where we have those students that will be able to excel because they have got use of this technology and the availability of internet at home, and that they may be put in a position where others may not. And I guess I want to understand that there's, that those students that do not yet have the ability to have access to internet are not going to be penalized because of this inability.
Oh, absolutely.
And that you've got policies in place that will ensure that.
Yes, sir, and let me also add, we're going to make sure that we have access to those students to be able to take this, like this device we have here. I don't want to unplug it, but there's a mobile Wi-Fi out here. Students will be able to check out and take home.
Well, that's good.
We'll also have, and we're working with a number of partners, of which the City of New Bern has approached us to create some mobile Wi-Fi hotspots. We are, we will definitely make sure that our students by policy are not penalized because they cannot access the internet at home. We will also have resources that we distribute to teachers so they understand how to get content on this iPad, so they don't need Wi-Fi access to connect to it. Each one of these devices will have memory inside them, obviously they do, and so if a student wants to download several books, they can actually download them to be held on the device, and they can read those at home instead of having to connect to the internet in order to do that.
That's good.
So that's one thing that this device allows us to do. Right now, they're, in some cases, not even taking a textbook home. Classrooms are sharing textbooks, that type of thing, and so we're really trying to avoid that. This is actually trying to help us level that playing field that you're worried about, Commissioner Dacey, and I appreciate the question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we need a motion to authorize the manager, County Manager, to transfer that money for the lease to the school budget.
So moved.
Suck it.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
Thank you, Sub-tenor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, Commissioners. I really sincerely appreciate the partnership between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education on this topic, and really everything that we're really trying to accomplish for our students in Craven County. Thank you very much.
The best part is this, we could call any sixth grader up and help us with our computers.
Yes, sir.
You're kidding. Next on the list is Craven Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Patrick Fallon, Flanagan.
Good morning, how's everybody doing?
Good morning.
My name's Patrick Flanagan, I'm here with the Down East RPO today, that's the Rural Transportation Planning Organization. So what I'm going to talk to you all this morning about is what's called a comprehensive transportation plan. So this is something that NC DOT does for every area in the state, and just so happens that it's now Craven County's turn. This is a long-range transportation plan. It is a 30-year vision for the future, what the transportation network is going to need, given the population and employment growth that's going to occur in the county, and how we can plan to accommodate that. So you see a kind of a list of what's included in a comprehensive transportation plan, what exactly it does. So just a couple of things I want to point out here specifically. It is not fiscally constrained. What that means is, when we look at what projects we're going to potentially put in this plan, we're not thinking about the money. We want these to be the ultimate goal, so we don't restrict ourselves when we're looking at specific projects to put into this by how much money the project is going to cost in the future. Construction dollars change so much, it's hard to say, if you're looking at something now that you're going to try to build 25 years from now, how much it's going to cost, so we don't bother with that at this stage in the planning process. Also, it's multimodal, so this is not just highway, we're looking at bicycle improvements, pedestrian improvements, transit improvements, every mode of transportation, rail will be included in this plan. And then ultimately, this is something that will be adopted by the local governments. This is a plan for Craven County to include the municipalities within Craven County. This is something that will supplement the MPO's Metropolitan Transportation Plan that they just completed last year to take the transportation planning to the whole county, look at all the municipalities as well as the county. So this will be something that will be locally adopted by all of the municipalities and Craven County when this is done, and then the NC DOT Board of Transportation. So why you need this is, this gives you that focused, long-range vision. It lets public participation happen in the transportation planning process, so there will be a survey that goes out to the public to see what their transportation needs are. There will be multiple public involvement sessions during this plan where folks can come and look and see what the recommendations are, and make suggestions and changes to those. That you guys will also be given that opportunity. By doing this planning now, it ties into the land uses of Craven County and the municipalities so that we can tie those things together and make sure that we're planning these things together to reduce costs. Because what you don't want is to be planning for an improvement to a roadway, but at the same time, planning development that will hinder the flow of that roadway. So by doing these things together, you can plan for how many driveway cuts you're going to have and all of that kind of stuff, that the land use and the development that happens there will tie into the transportation network and make sure that things are flowing the way they're supposed to be, and then you're not shooting yourself in the foot, planning a roadway where the roadway doesn't really mix with what the development is. So just some things on, you know, why the CTP should happen. Next, just to kind of talk about what exactly is going to be involved in the process, this is kind of just a real quick breakdown of how it goes. It's six, what look like easy steps, but a lot of data-intensive work is in those processes. So really, you know, part of that public involvement will be to help develop the vision of the county and the municipalities as far as transportation goes, looking at that needs assessment, where is it functioning now, where is it not functioning now? How is that going to work in the future as you add population and employment? Look at where those deficiencies are, analyze the different alternatives that can address those deficiencies in the future, develop that final plan, and then of course, go to adoption from all the local elected officials. So who will be involved in this process? You see here kind of just a list of all of the entities that we get together to be involved through the actual day-to-day planning of this. This will be about a two-year process to complete this plan. We will have a steering committee that will meet monthly to go over the analysis that NC DOT is doing and bring to us to get that local feedback and information, aside from just the public participation. We've already been working with the County Manager's Office on who can represent Craven County, you know, within each of these things, you know, some definitely emergency management, the schools, obviously parks and rec is important, you see that list there. So this is just kind of a initial guide of who will be stepping in to work on this process as we go through it. And then finally, just kind of a list of broadly what we'll be studying here. Obviously, we're going to be looking at where the safety issues are, how can we address those, where that connectivity and mobility needs to be improved. Again, that kind of speaks to that land use element. And then where is traffic now? Where do we think traffic is going to increase? Where do we think it's going to decrease? And then we have to look at kind of how Craven County's network fits into the whole statewide network. So you have the North Carolina Strategic Transportation Corridors that will be looked at, of which Craven County has two, US-17 and US-70, and then also, you know, how the feds functionally classify roadways and how that can tie into how those things are funded and what money is available to improve these things. So that's really broad strokes on what a comprehensive transportation plan is. Just wanted to kind of make everybody aware that this is about to begin. We're looking probably to have our first steering committee in the September timeframe, because I want to get out and give this presentation to all the municipalities as well, so that everybody's aware this is happening before we actually kick it off. But with that, I'll answer any questions anybody has. Yes, sir.
You kept saying all the municipalities. It's only the municipalities that are in the MPO plan?
That are outside of the MPO, actually, because the MPO has its own plan, the MPO will represent the municipalities that are included within it, then all of the other municipalities that are outside will be, so we're talking Cove City, Dover, Vanceboro, and Haplo.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. I think you set on the statewide Strategic Transportation Initiative, Initiative Planning Board, or whatever it is. What is the correct name for that?
So the Strategic Transportation Corridors is the statewide plan that has identified specific statewide corridors that are important to mobility and freight and connectivity.
Okay, well, what I'm trying to say is that, to me, the Strategic Transportation Initiative has been a beautiful plan in some regards, in most regards, but what it doesn't, in my opinion, take into account our future needs and where roads are going, it says, particularly the statewide pool, which is what, half of the funding?
Forty percent.
Forty percent of the funding is what do you need now, right now? And it doesn't plan for what are you going to need in five years. It doesn't take into account county planning, where is the development going, where's the school going?
Right.
This old airport road.
Yes, sir.
We know traffic's going to increase out there because there's a thousand...
Yes, sir.
Unit subdivision going out there soon.
Right.
And you've got a school, you've got a very narrow road, the ditch is three, four, five feet off the side of it, and, you know, none of that stuff is taken into account in most of the scoring, not just for the statewide mobility, but even for the region and district that I'm aware of. Does this, my question is, would a plan like this ever be considered in funding as, you know, with the current scoring?
So there's a couple of answers to your question. First, you're right about the Strategic Transportation Corridor Initiative. The first step was to outline what corridors are important, and they've done that. The follow-up step is to come back and then individually study each of those corridors to determine what they want that to look like in the future. That endeavor has not started yet, they're just now kicking that off this year. So they will get to that, but not before we do what we're doing here. One of the main things that the Comprehensive Transportation Plan does is look at where your population is now, where your employment is now, looks at where growth is happening, looks at where development is possible, given environmental and human constraints, applies future populations to those specific places within the county, and sees how that is going to impact the transportation network. So it will do exactly what you're saying, when we know that there's a huge development coming in this particular area of the county, we can put that population there and see how it will affect the transportation network, and see where the roads will fail. So that's exactly what this plan does. And then as far as the scoring goes, the whole idea is to take this plan, figure out what the projects are, and those are the projects that you enter into the scoring system. So they have not yet, because not every county in the state has a comprehensive transportation plan. In fact, Craven is one of the last to go into this process. But the eventually plan to make it so that you cannot enter a project into that scoring system that doesn't come from a planning document such as this. So they're not quite there yet, but that is going to be the final step. So we do need to make sure that we're looking at this comprehensively and making sure that we have every need we think we're going to want to address in this plan, because eventually they will say, you can only enter in projects from these plans.
Do we have a plan like this now?
No, sir.
There's never been one.
There's this old thoroughfare plan, which is two steps back as to how they do this transportation planning now. So that was from the mid to early 90s, I believe. Again, the MPO has a plan that they just did for their area that we're expanding their model to include the rest of Craven, so that we're making sure that those things meld together very well. But no, Craven does not currently have a plan like this.
Who's actually doing this plan? Do you have a consultant doing it?
No, sir, this is done by NC DOT. So Catherine Bryant, who you're familiar with from the MPO, will be the lead engineer on this plan.
Any other questions?
So we don't have to spend any of County's money on this?
No, sir. DOT does this for everyone, and they pay for it.
That's good. Thank goodness for DOT.
That's right.
Thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is Department of Soil and Water, Craven County...
Next on the agenda is Department of State's Soil and Water, Craven County Stream Debris Removal Projects. Pamela Hawkins and Patrick Baker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, it's that time of the year again, we're narrowing down on start times for stream debris removal and some potential beaver management projects. So I'm just going to read. After Hurricane Matthew, the state of North Carolina made grant funds available to remove downed trees, debris, from waterways in the areas impacted by the storm. The county applied for and received grant funds administered by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and the Golden Leaf Foundation. Golden Leaf funds can only be used on creeks that had prior maintenance. These include the creeks of Swift, Little Swift, Bachelor, Core, and Flat Swamp. The Department of Agriculture funds can be used on any creeks that receive hurricane damage. And your first attachment here shows our plan, our creek snagging plan for the year, first year this year and next year as well. The expenditure deadline for the Golden Leaf Grant is February the 15th, 2019, while the expenditure deadline for the Department of Agriculture grant is December the 31st, 2019. Due to these deadlines, staff recommends that the creeks and their tributaries associated with Golden Leaf Grant be performed first. The main creeks will be paid for out of Golden Leaf funding, while the tributaries will be funded by the Department of Agriculture Funds. Fourteen of the 27 targeted streams have been identified as having significant beaver activity, which could have a negative impact on stream debris removal activities. As a result, we will also be performing beaver management on the 14 identified streams prior to the debris removal activities. In your second attachment, you will see our stream groups that we have targeted for beaver management this year. It's a total of 72 miles of streams. On July 19th, requests for proposals were sent to 17 licensed private trappers and wildlife damage control agents, with the RFPs due back August 4th. On August 7th, staff met and reviewed the prices received from five beaver management companies. You see, your next attachment is the list, the sheet that we use to rank, compare prices, and come up with recommendations. Based on the issues explained above and prices received, staff recommends that the county contract with a private licensed trapper for beaver management activities within these targeted streams. Staff recommends two contracts be awarded. The first contract to Claude Taylor Wildlife Services for stream groups one and four in an amount of $9,500. Second contract to Beaver Be gone for stream groups two and three in the amount of $12,200. These contractors have been used in the past by citizens of the county, and they are familiar with targeted streams. Each contractor has worked in these areas in the past, so they know where they're at and they know the community. Requested board action is for the board to approve the attached project ordinance, the budget amendment, and award the contracts for beaver management as stated above.
Are there any questions? You know, I'd like to say this. I think that in the past, we've only done a few of these. We haven't done the amount that we're doing here.
Yes, sir.
But it certainly had helped us with Hurricane Matthew.
Yes.
To have less flooding. And that's why this is important, because now we're doing all the creeks in the county just about.
Yes, sir.
And it should help us out a lot. Yes, Commissioner Lina.
Mr. Chairman, let me add on to that. All of the meetings, I think, most of us have gone to. We have been the lead county in this state. We are the model for dragging and clearing us to prevent the flooding. We've got counties coming to the manager listening, looking at how we're doing this. So at least I come in, you on what we're doing. We're way above, and Matthew was a good example of what this program has done for us here locally. So thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lina?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Ron Antry, Department of State's Tax. We haven't seen you in a while, Ron.
It has been a while, but as Mr. Baker, who just preceded me, just said, it's that time of year again. It is the time of year that I ask for your approval of the tax collection settlement, and you should have a copy of that document in your agenda. I'll draw your attention to the two or three significant numbers here that, if you look down toward the bottom, it'll give you the net levy, the net tax levy. This, by the way, does not include registered motor vehicles that are now collected by the state. So this number does not include that. But the net levy is $47,158,313.73 after all adjustments. And of that amount, we collected $46,826,112.05, leaving an uncollected amount as of June 30th of $332,201.68. That results in a tax collection percentage of 99.3, and I'm happy to report that it's a little bit higher than it was last year. Last year's percentage was 99.24, so we were able to show some small increase in that percentage. And I would like to, this is the one time of year I'd take the opportunity to thank all the people who were involved in achieving this goal. It's not the work of one person, not the work of just one department. There are many people, my staff, many people in this room who helped make this happen. And to each and to all of them, I give them the thanks for the work they've done on this.
Are we still largest, best in the state?
We're among the top 10 to 12, I think, but not the top.
Excellent job.
Well, thank you.
I can actually answer. I got a sheet while we were there. He's actually number eight.
Number eight.
Number eight.
I didn't know that.
He was 12.
Mr. Chairman, I like to break it forward.
Yes.
And I hate to say this to Ronnie as well, you know, he's well thought of in the state at both the, at the state level and the national level, talking to the different commissioners up here. I mean, they're surprised and amazed at the level that we're getting on collection. And you could probably write your own ticket where you wanted to go within the state.
Don't give them any ideas.
You're well thought of.
Talk very good about him.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lina?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
And as the second part of my presentation, now that you've accepted this settlement, it's time to be charged with the collection of the 2017 taxes. I can tell you that the billing file was created last Thursday and is at the printers in Mount Airy, ready to be mailed today. I think so the tax bills will be arriving later this week. So the bills are about to be mailed. They have not been yet, but they will be within the next day or two.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Jack White, Dennis Holton, and Craig Warren, Department of State's Information Technology, consideration of contract with Tyler Technology for ERP software solutions.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Yeah, this is, I will tell you, I am certainly pleased to be leading this off and not in the technologically advanced part. I am more of the tea in this thing up for you. What I wanted to make you aware of is, to me, this is the single largest purchase for technology this county will make, outside of what you just did for Dr. Doyle. She kind of gets the prize for the amount of money. But for Craven County government, this is probably the biggest thing we would do. Certainly changes how we interact with the public and with vendors completely. This is a completely different platform. And to put this in perspective, this was on the list of things to do when I got here in 2010. This was something that we started developing and figuring it's getting close. As I spoke with the board during our budget work sessions, we're at a dilemma here where we're on a platform that the industry is not training folks to manage any longer. We have some legacy employees that have sort of built this system and grown with it over time. So as we look at new platforms, we want to make something that is modern, that we can get people from college that are getting trained in the dynamics of this new system. This equipment touches almost every, I think I can say every department within Craven County government, but in particular, we're talking about a two-phase approach. This is phase one, we're asking for, and this is everything in county government with the exception of the tax department and the reappraisal section within tax. That will be phase two. The reason we're holding off on that is because they're basically in the middle of a revow now, and we need to get closer to the transition period when they begin the next one to implement the new software. As we talked during budget and in your, in your package, which Mr. Holton's going to overview, there are, this is a system made of modules. Each division within government has several modules that go with it. The one I can talk about that I'm excited about in our department is a citizens portal. Citizens can come in and actually look in real time at data within our system, whether it be a water bill, they want to look at a tax record. And it also has an element, what we call the transparency portal, where you can get in there and look at some of the financial things that we're doing. And that's something that this board's been interested in over time, that we just couldn't really produce out of our old system. All in all, I'll tell you, we really struggled with one issue in this, and I think you could tell that during budget, was whether we hosted this software internally or we hosted it off-site. We have made the decision to host it internally simply because of the cost. Hosting off-site was going to be over a million dollars in the first term of this contract, and we quite frankly think we can do a better job here. And we've looked at options for disaster recovery, where we are hosting the critical data off-site, but maintaining the mainframe here in our facility. So with that said, you know, again, we're talking about phase one, a $1,312,357 project. It will probably take two budget years to get that done. That's why we're setting it up as a project, so that it can transverse those two years. And I'm going to turn over to Dennis Holton now for some more technical aspects, then Craig will come in on the finance. And I'll stay around for questions as well. Dennis?
Good morning. How are you all? This is a topic we've talked about several times in work sessions over the last year, and as Jack mentioned, we've been talking about this for several years now, just to get our county to where we can progress and move forward with offering new things within our departments, making it a little better to operate internally, but also to our citizens out there. Citizens expect things now that get it from businesses and industry. They're also expecting it from local governments as well, so we're moving forward to get that. I was just going to show you the, as part of this project, why did we select Tyler for this? I mean, there was several reasons. We did the, we've had multiple vendor demonstrations from various vendors of government software come in. We've gone to other counties, looking at their software and how they do their operations. We've had discussion among the various statewide groups and across our North Carolina local government group, discussed with them, discussions among our internal staff, and demonstrations. I think the board had a demonstration from a vendor back in June when we were talking about this at one of your work sessions, that you had a chance to see some of that software and how it operated with. So we've spent a lot of time in this over the last year and are now bringing it to you to get your approval to move forward with this. And we selected the Tyler as the vendor to move forward with. This company has got installations in over 50 counties in North Carolina and equal the number of cities. Just in the surrounding area, the city of Havelock, Pitt County, Lenore County, Pamlico County, Green County, Wake County. So it's all over the state with this group, so. We're making an investment here for not just a few years. We want to make an investment for the foreseeable future, something, if it can last as long as the systems that we've been on today, 15 to 20 years, then that's great. Because we're making an investment, not just money, but we're making an investment in employees' time to relearn this operation, relearn how to do business here, and also bring the citizen part into where they can do business with the county a lot easier. So we selected the Tyler approach, and as you can see, that's a $1.3 million investment. As Jack mentioned, we decided to host a software in-house as opposed to with a software-as-a-service hosted outside of Craven County. In our budget work session, we saw that that price was about $600,000 more to go software-as-a-service, as a surface, $600,000 to a million dollars over seven years. So we feel, we save us some money by doing it in-house. We feel like we've got the staff that can support that internally. So that's kind of the breakdown. Since we are going to be hosting it on a new platform, there's some hardware to be purchased by the county. That'll be hosted across the street that will, the software will actually run on. Because we're moving off of our legacy system that's here, the AS400 won't run on that, so we'll need, we're going to purchase new hardware to support that. Questions? That's kind of where we're at. We've been talking about it for a long time, so now.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, please. You said part of this would enable citizens to, I guess, interact with various departments and all. Would that mean like you could pay bill online, bills online?
Yes. Pay water bills online. You can be able to begin to do the inspections, parts, pieces online, and look toward paying for those.
Okay. Like a building inspection?
A building inspection, yes, sir.
You could do that online?
The application.
Pay it with your credit card?
Yes, sir.
And move on.
Those are areas we want to get to, where we can use the credit cards online.
Same thing, or anything? Is carts going to be integrated?
There are some mobility programs that we already have there. What this will allow carts to do is have a more seamless revenue in and out with finance, which will make Craig's life a lot easier and Kelly's life a lot easier, so they can track those funding. And I'm sure we can take some of their mobility software and, you know, sort of blend it in with the Tyler to get some real-life data on it, so. I'm not sure that we spent a whole lot of time, other than the financials on carts, but.
Can you give us a few more examples of how citizens would be able to go online and interact or get information that they might need where they can't do that?
There's one portion, module, that would be the citizen self-service part, where a citizen would be able to log in, and they would be able to change an address on a water bill. They would have their own certain login ID unique to them. That would be one way that a citizen would be able to interact. They would also be able to go online and view tax bills, water bills, any bills that they would have from the county as well, that would be associated with that citizen.
This is mainly a financial software, but there'll be other ways, other options to enhance maybe. For instance, with a building inspector, could you, you could order the inspection, I guess you could request online, request inspection, and then can you follow the process after that?
You can.
When it was done, if it failed or passed?
See the notes that are available to be seen? Yes. That is part of this first initial rollout, inspections, planning, and environmental health from doing the inspection side of building is all part of this.
Yeah. And speaking of environmental health, there's obviously a lot of bill payments, inspections that you could order there. How about DSS, or can you make an appointment? Does it go that far?
It doesn't go that far with DSS with the clients there.
Okay. And one other question. Since you're going to be able to do all this stuff online, use people's credit cards and all that, the firewall is what, here or online?
It's here. It's here. We would not do the credit card here. We would contract with a third-party company that is set up to handle the credit cards, much like we do with the recreation where you book, where you can pay for fees there. It's not here. It's actually with a certified.
Card numbers will be stored on all.
They would not be stored on any of our equipment.
So you could, recreation, you could reserve, can you reserve a?
Recreation currently has a software that they're using right now.
That you can do that.
And make a payment online. And we've assessed the cost of the recreation piece, and in the contract, we have that reserved as an optional item because we have, it's more cost-effective. reserved as an optional item, because we have, it's more cost effective with what we have currently in place versus Tyler solution.
Mr. Chairman. Tax bills, you say it's going to come, when would it come about? After the revow?
Phase two, we're thinking 2020, fiscal 2020.
Okay. One thing that I've advocated for that we hadn't accomplished yet is that property that you own be itemized on the tax bills. We still haven't attained that yet. Would I be able to go online and pull up, I've got $300,000 worth of equipment that I pay taxes on, can I go on there and see what I have that I'm paying taxes on?
The inventory on that? You would be able to on phase two, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that's great, thank you.
And I think one thing we failed to mention, and I think I failed to mention, is this is going to be an entire document imaging depository for the county, where one of the pieces we were looking at, particularly in the county manager's office, for all our files, is a way we could scan those and digitize them. This will allow us to do that without having to buy a third party, which we were right on the cusp of doing. Tyler actually has that built into the program, we'll be doing.
And contracts?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Nothing.
Mr. Chairman, there have been a number of counties over the years that have received awards of distinction for having provided a level of transparency above and beyond other forms of government. Oftentimes, those award winners are counties that include the ability of the taxpayer, the average citizen in their county, to be able to look at dispersments that the county has made to various parties. Is that something that's going to be available in this?
Yes, sir. The transparency module is just that. It allows you to pick which dispersment you would like to be visible from any kind of inquiry from the internet. There are ones that you would not want to be visible, of course, if it's involved in an adoption or possibly even a jail inmate record, but that can be determined, you know, by the, by the county.
Okay, and what sort of process are we going to have established to help make those decisions?
It will be a group of the manager and the, whatever area that is.
Getting part of the training center when we bring those folks to start building those platforms with Tyler. Let me add to, over time, that transparency piece will get better and better, because the data will have to get entered into the system, and as we get, you know, past the past years, we'll have more and more history in that system, so it'll just get better in time.
Obviously, it'd probably be wise to reach out to some of those counties that have already gone through this exercise to determine what their protocols are, so we're not having to recreate the wheel.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the finance director wants to ask us for the money.
Yeah, now we've selected a solution, now we've got to figure out how to pay for it here. What we, due to the size of the project and because it will cross fiscal years, we're recommending a project ordinance for this. The estimated budget for this project will total $1,312,357, and is divided into three major categories consisting of the following. You have your software and implementation services at $1,145,911, which covers the software contract, computer equipment and hardware for $103,952 for additional equipment that will be needed to house and run the software, and a 5% contingency at $62,494 for any unknown or unanticipated items that may come up during the project. The county, as you know, we have been setting aside funding over several years to pay for this, and out of the capital reserve. The budgeted funds, funding sources would include transfers of $859,135 from the capital reserve fund, $183,222 from the water reserves, and $270 from IT's current budget in the general fund. If you may recall, that amount was originally budgeted as the first year maintenance for this year on the SaaS solution, which is the solution we opted not to go with. Also attached to the ordinance is the copy of the budget amendment, which is just showing you how the revenues and expenditures are being appropriated and the corresponding transfers into the project fund. Are there any questions on those two documents?
Let us get a motion at first, and then a motion to approve?
Go to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a statement if I may, and this is for the public comment, just so the public knows, and the meetings that we've had as a board on this matter, we've all, I think, had a little reservation in spending this amount of money, but the present equipment that we have, the software, the AS400 equipment, has been stated already, has been utilized for the last 30 years. Some of those individuals that know how to work this equipment to keep it up and going are nearing retirement age, and so we are getting to a point where we don't have folks coming along that can continue to keep this equipment up and running as it should, and it has served its time, and it has already been stated that it does only meet minimum requirements of what we presently have as a county. And so, you know, even though we hate to spend this kind of money, it's a tremendous investment, I think it's, we have to do it. I don't think we have an option, and we're trying to be proactive rather than do it when something fails and then we as a county are down, so. It's a hard pill to swallow to spend these millions of dollars, but it is not being done loosely. A lot of thought has gone into it by this board and the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion, we have a second. We'll require a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Department of Matters, Social Services, Jeff Minneton.
Thank you, Commissioners. We bring before you two budget amendments that are related to our funding authorizations and two of our programs. The first one involves our child daycare subsidy funded administrative dollars. You'll see the amounts that have decreased those, and those are the difference in the estimates that they were given to us in preparation for our budget that we get in February, and the allocations that we receive once the state budget is passed. And the second is in regards to our crisis intervention program, that's one of our two energy programs that we administer at the Department of Social Services, and that again applies to the difference in the estimate versus the allocation we receive. You'll see that we did receive an increase in those funding based upon the estimate. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Let us get a mo, let's get a motion on the first one, we'll take them separately.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a discussion. And there's no discussion? We'll need a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Second is the budget amendment to request increase for crisis intervention program for additional funding received. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Jennifer Blackman for Department of Matters Health, new fee recommendations.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So first up, on the fee recommendations, you know, we've had a lot of increase in primary care since, services since we've expanded our offices, but also in dealing with the opioid crisis and the heroin crisis. Two of these labs here on the first page that you're looking at, the hepatic function panel and the hepatitis C antibody test, are two tests that we did not have fees for that we really felt like we needed to establish, because we're having more patients coming in that have either used or want to know their status. So with that being said, the hepatic function panel, we do have the ability to run that in-house, however, we also wanted to get an outsourced sample through LabCorp, because if that machine's ever down, you know, want to be able to have a backup plan. So our LabCorp charge for that particular test was $3.50 at our contracted price, of course, if you factor in staff time and medical supply fees, that is where we came up with the $12.93, making that fee $13 for that particular test. Also, with the hepatitis C antibody test, LabCorp is charging us a fee of $10, factored in staff time, medical supply fees, we're looking at a proposed rate for that test of $20.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. And there's no discussion? Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Maze, the ayes have.
Okay. The second page, thank you. Basically, looking at fees, I thought, I'm going down to the commissioners anyway to talk about fees and implementing new fees. Let's look overall at our fees that have not been looked at in the past maybe 10 years. And these fees on this page, number one through six, they are things that we're already doing, with the exception of the Skylar IUD. That is a new IUD that we're wanting to purchase and start offering in family planning. The office visits and things like that, if you can see, our current fees were well below what Medicaid was even reimbursing, so certainly don't want to lose out on any potential money that we can capture, because our fee is set too low. So the preventative office visit, we want to recommend that to 154, it was 140. Another office visit established, looking at changing that to 146 versus the current fee of 140.
She has skipped from A to C in your agenda package.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to be here. He's got six.
Sorry, and see, when I print the agenda, I don't see what order those attachments are in, so I apologize if I confuse you.
That's all right.
I just want to make sure they knew.
I knew where they were going.
I was lost.
C.
It should be. Reminder, Ms. Anderson. So these are already fees that we have, I'm sorry, and back it up if I'm confusing y'all, but again, we were charging well below what we can be reimbursing. This is just because we had not looked at these fees in years. Certainly want to make sure we can get our money's worth for what we're doing. So going down the fees, the two office visits, there's a beta methadone injection that we're doing in maternity, our current fee was $1.13, we're looking at increasing that to $6. The Marina IUD, which we're already doing, our current fee is $746, we want to increase that to 860. And for the Paraguard IUD, our current fee was $387, that's a big difference of what we were missing out on what Medicaid was, could reimburse for if we had our fee set for that. So $776 with that.
Okay. We'll need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Or any discussion? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Maze, the ayes have. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. And last page, I know, a lot of fees today, apologize. Our women's health nursing consultant, they come in every three years to monitor our program, and this year was the year they came in and monitored our family planning and women's health. They look at everything from the services we provide down to the billing, and what she discovered was that, you know, we receive all of our family planning medications through our 340B, which is a federal medication program. And with that being said, that program allows us to purchase devices, pills, shots, at a very cheap discounted rate. But what that program does not allow is for us to offer that, we, we can't for Medicaid patients, because Medicaid patients in general already receive discounts from the federal government. So we have to actually set two separate fees for our self-pay or private insurance versus our Medicaid patients. And that fee has to be set on acquisition cost, basically what, you charge what you actually paid for it. Well, those prices can change quarterly, so if you look at number one on our oral contraceptive pills, you can see how over the average quarter, they can fluctuate based on the price. And so we were advised by our women's health consultant, you take an average of the whole year, and that's how you establish that acquisition cost. So for Medicaid patients, for the contraceptive pills, our current fee is $5.48, we were overcharging for Medicaid, so we're proposing $1.50, and that's per pack of pills. And the way, you may ask yourself, because this is the biggest part that confused me in dealing with medical codes, well, how do you know the difference in the code from a private versus a Medicaid? If you'll see on the end of these codes, the UD, that's what we call a UD modifier, that is what distinguishes, distinguishes a Medicaid patient from, say, someone who's Same thing with number two, Depo, we took the quarterly price of it. Some of the quarters were 28 cents, it was a, it was a, it really would have been an outlier and a skew on that, so we looked over several years of what our common price was for Depo, and at $13.90, that's, you're talking 13 cent per unit, so that's what we're looking at charging. Number three, the Nexpanon, you can see our quarterly prices on that as well, come up with the average of $363. Same thing with the Marina IUD, average of $265.79, we rounded it up to $266. Same thing with our Paraguard IUD, $244 is going to be the new current fee, and same thing with the Skylar. And the Skylar, that is the new IUD that we want to start offering within family planning. And this, again, is a federal requirement that we do not overcharge.
Yeah, this is a mandate, basically.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? And there's no discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Maze, the ayes have.
Thank you.
One name.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for Kelly Walker with Department of Matters, court's information regarding FY217 to 218 Rural Operating Assistance Program.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning. The Rural Operating Assistance Program, we refer to as ROP, is a state-funded transportation grant program administered by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division. ROP consolidates the elderly and disabled transportation assistance program, which we refer to EDTAP, for the rural and urban areas, the employment transportation assistance program for the rural and urban areas, and the rural general public, which we refer to as RGP, for the rural areas only into one application. Each county within our service area is responsible for making their own ROP application for their respective county. Craven County has been allocated $90,472 for EDTAP, $23,860 for employment, and $84,714 for RGP. These amounts are the same as they were in the prior fiscal year. The RGP requires a 10% match, and that is covered by the fares that we charge to passengers. A public hearing is not required to apply for this funding, and in addition to the completed application, a certified statement signed by the county manager and county finance officer is required.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This used to require a public hearing and just transparent, I've asked Kelly to continue to come up and make you aware of this opportunity, since public hearings no longer required. It's just a thing we decided to do.
Just for information purposes?
Correct, there's no action needed, just making you aware.
Thank you very much for the information. Okay, Department of Matters, Greg Warren, Finance.
Good morning. I have one budget amendment for your consideration this morning. The workers' compensation insurance renewal for both the fire departments and rescue squads came in higher than originally budgeted due to higher-than-anticipated increases in premiums and number of volunteers. In order to cover the shortages, an additional $8,037 will need to be appropriated from fund balance, and will be approved for the following squads, New Bern Craven, $1,315, Bridgestone EMS, $720, Vansper Rescue, $3,495, Cove City, $1,022, and Township Number Seven, EMS, $1,485.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
One question, Mr. Chairman. Where, where's the situation lying at? I mean, is most of it due to we've gotten more volunteers, or most of it doing because of the, of the increase in compensation?
Mostly it's the increase in the premium per volunteer. That increased pretty substantial from prior years, and that could be based on claims history. I don't have the claims detailed, but...
No, that's fine.
If anything, I think our volunteers have gone down. If anything, I think our volunteers have gone down.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion? And a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Tyson.
On the workers' compensation, I know in the construction business, it's based on the amount of salaries.
Yeah, job class code, there's a code for each type of job.
It's the same here. How much, you know, I'll talk to you yet, how much it is?
I could not tell you, I could not answer that for these class of workers. I don't have that information.
You know if it would be comparatively high or low, for instance, like a roofer is, the workers' compensations out of this world.
Yeah, I would definitely classify it somewhere in that range, higher than obviously an office worker, but similar to that type of job where it's, there's more risk involved. But I don't have the per.
Commissioner Tyson, typically in counties who have county employees as EMS workers, that is normally the largest claim generator outside of law enforcement. Because they're out in the field, they're lifting, they're moving, they're constantly doing things. So it's typically a lost area.
Any other questions? We will need a roll call though.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyer?
Yes.
Commissioner McHale?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Okay. Next is appointments. Havelock Planning Board.
Hold on that one, Mr. Chairman.
Hold. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question of the clerk?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, have you received any paperwork for Mike Barnhill?
No.
Okay. I was informed that some paperwork would be forthcoming for his appointment. So I guess, and then it's further my understanding that Ms. Hood would be willing to serve until later this year, when another appointment will be available. I guess, given that situation, can Jan continue to serve, or do we need to reappoint her today?
Yes, she would just continue serving until she's replaced.
Okay. I guess, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to ask for us to hold off to do anything until Mr. Barnhill's able to do something. Help us out here. Thank you.
New Bern Planning and Zoning Board. I spent the weekend calling a few more on that, and I haven't gotten anywhere yet. I guess, can we hold off another month on that, with two weeks?
I will check. I think you're getting close to the amount of time.
Can we hold off for two weeks, then, and let me finish calling on that list?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Craven 100 Alliance Board. I'd like to table that as, we've got two people that have, are applying for that, and will have their application shortened. Current appointment, Craven County Community Child Protection Team.
Mr. Chairman, I received information last night that a person with outstanding credentials is interested in making her availability known to our board. So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask that we continue this item until the next meeting.
All right, so we'll table that till the next meeting. Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, we have a Barbara Smith that wants to be appointed. I would appoint Barbara Smith. Upcoming appointments, Jury Commission, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Voluntary Agricultural District, and Clean Sweep Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could you give us a briefing on why everybody has resigned from the?
From the Adult Care Committee? Okay. One of it is due to having a problem of bed bugs in one of our facilities. However, I have, through Commissioner Dacey and myself, we have contacted the ECC Director, the new director, and we are offering a meeting to all the people that resign to come into this meeting and find out exactly what the situation is. And I have hopes of getting at least three or four more of those people back. So that meeting is going to take place, I think it's either this week or next week. I would like, I'm going to go attend if I can. If it's next week, I won't be able to, because I'll be on vacation, but somebody else might be able to attend, maybe Mr. Vice Chairman Dacey can.
Yes, Commissioner Tyson, I'm very pleased to report that I think that we had an exceptionally constructive meeting with the folks, with the folks at East Carolina Council. And their representative, Ms. Pridgen, and Mr. Livingston, the new executive director, they were very forthcoming with their, their information as to what they knew, as to the status of what level of investigation the state was taking. And there might be a misunderstanding of information that was provided to some of these board members that have decided to, to curtail their activities. And we're hopeful that with the fullness of information that can be provided by staff, that their opinion may change and that they will recognize that it is a true and honest desire by both ECC and the state to do the right thing here, to make certain that the citizens of Craven County are protected, and that, that the health and well-being is maintained in those facilities.
We've been assured that it's only one facility involved, the others are isolated instances, and that will be explained to everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now we have the Craven County Attorney's Report.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Two matters for you this morning. The first is to consider the final acceptance of an offer to purchase for 836 Howard Street. The offer amount was $2,250, which is also the current tax value. It was previously approved for the initial acceptance. It was advertised, there were no upset bids, so it's before you for your final consideration. City of New Bern has approved a final acceptance, and out of the proceeds, the county would receive approximately $1,900.
Okay, I have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mase, the ayes have it.
Second is an initial offer to purchase at 509 Broad Street, which is the old probation office. This is county property only, it was not a foreclosure, obviously. The amount that was offered is $78,000. I'll defer to the county manager as to what he believes a good number would be for this property. I will tell you, though, that your options are, in terms of selling it, if you don't want to accept it, it's being advertised, or there's a sign-out front, we can just wait. But the other option is, is that if you, you could accept the offer, go through the upset bid process. And at that point, if you did not feel like it was still high enough, you would not have to give final approval, just like the first one we did on Howard Street. You can go through that process, and then at the end say, you know, we, it's not enough, let's not sell it after all. So you do have some flexibility as to how you proceed. But I would defer to the county managers to a number.
And I appreciate Jimmy saying that, that is an option. Certainly, my personal opinion, that's a low-ball offer. That's not the value of facility. We've came up with numbers over various times, and I would, there's expertise here in the room, Don, Commissioner Tyson could talk about it. But that's low for the area and what some recent sales have been. That's significantly lower than an offer we received about a year and a half ago before we explored the entrepreneurship center. We have shown the building anywhere from 15 to 20 times since the sign's been up for about a month. I think at this time, this is, this is low. And I don't know that it's even, in my opinion, worth moving forward to the upset bid till you get a better number.
Okay, I would agree with it. I have a motion. We'll post a motion, I'll leave. Not to accept.
Jimmy, is that correct?
That's fine.
I like that motion, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the final matter is a request that's come to us from a company that owns property in the industrial park. It's property the county sold a few years ago, and the county retained a right of first refusal so that any time the owner wants to sell it to another party, it's got to come before you for your, either you to exercise the right and you buy it back, or to waive your right of first refusal. And they're in that process now. There's a copy of the original deed, the county sold, it's got a survey plan on the very last page, it'll help you identify where, but it's the cellular antenna, I think on the south side of the park, I believe.
Yes, it's on the Craven with Indian side.
So the current owner is trying to sell their assets to a new corporation, and it's before you for a, for you to exercise or waive your right of first refusal.
Mr. Chairman, let me comment. Certainly been transferred between media companies over the last several renditions. I think the board's been aware of those. What we're excited about at this time, this is being transferred not to a media company, but to an active user who has a development plan for the site, which I think will be positive. I cannot share a lot of what that will be. But it will be a positive impact, not only on the county property that's out there, but on the industrial property that's already in it. I think it's an active use.
You're asking us to make a motion?
I would say at this time, there's, there's no need for the county to own this property. There's no need for us to buy it back.
Do I have a motion?
Still move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Question?
Yeah.
Does the right of first refusal still follow on to the new owner?
Yes, sir. It will for a total of 20 years from, I think the original deed was 2001.
In case he decides not to move forward.
Correct. Are you transferring it again, you give another option to take a look at it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did you vote? I'm sorry. I was taking notes, who did you actually vote?
I thought we did already.
There's a motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple brief things for you. I was excited last week to attend the grand opening, or the groundbreaking for the Volt Center over on First Street. It was a partnership with, of course, the City of New Bern, Craven Community College in Craven County, along with a lot of grant funders. I think it's a neat project, I think it goes to work into some of the goals that, we've been focused on with workforce development. So I'm excited to see them move forward and opportunity to be there. In your agenda today, and in the consent agenda, I really struggled with an item on there, whether it should be consent or regular, but I'm going to take some time to talk about it. And it was Item E, Request for a Proclamation for National Recovery Month. And I wanted to make sure that didn't get lost in sort of our meeting, and it gets in the official record, because this is important. This was a resolution, it was brought forth to me at a time I just finished a meeting talking about opioid abuse and awareness, and what needs to happen in this county. I think this event is exactly what we need to start kicking off the informational, the educational component, getting people involved. I think it's also symbolic to me that the county's taken a role in this, and on September 22nd, we'll be hosting a leadership forum that the chairman probably wants to talk about a little bit, so I won't spoil it. But I think this month means a whole lot more to me now that I understand what we're up against with this opioid crisis. And I know there are going to be some events around Recovery Month, around New Bern, around Craven County, and I encourage you to attend. And I'll try to provide you a list of what those events are as we move forward. So didn't want to leave that out. Two updates on county projects. One, I do have an official day now, September 4th, is when we think the contractor down at the water plant will be finishing up their part. And when I say that, that means finishing construction. That means the county will sort of get our occupancy and be able to start using. They'll still be working on a punch list, which are things as we're going through that they need to, they need to adjust and move forward. We are still on target for October 16th, which would be a ribbon-cutting down at the plant, a public, sort of a public event with some tours. I'm not, I'm not imagining a lot of pageantry with it, other than I really want you guys to take a look in the public, take a look at what we've built and how it works, and just a couple words from the folks who've been down there. I want to thank a couple people on that, certainly Rusty Hayes, and Craig Warren, and Gene Hodges, and the team that's sort of been with me in this, and hanging with it. It's been a long process, but we've got a really good product, a really nice product that we can be proud of. And lastly, many of you have been on Old Airport Road and been by the animal shelter, you'll notice there's a new building there. It is rapidly coming to a finish, and as we transition animals into that building, we'll be transitioning to the old building to do the rehab work there. We're still on target to have that done this fall. I expect a little event with that as well, but we're certainly busting at the seams right now, and we need to get this facility online and start dealing with some of the excess animals in this county. That's all I have, any questions for me?
I would like to congratulate you on your negotiations with the Water Department, because I know you had a lot of problems there.
So I have less hair now. When I started, I could actually comb it and make it a little.
That's all.
Yeah, that's right, I'm moving it around, so, thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you have a time on the water plant?
Yeah, we're going to shoot for 11 o'clock. I think we should be done, I mean, we're now at 10:15, roughly, we're usually done about that time. I think 11 is good.
Okay, thank you.
The county manager mentioned that we're under budget on that project?
Under budget.
No, he didn't.
Significantly under budget.
We were waiting for you.
We haven't talked about it a whole lot, because we were in a negotiation with the contractor and had some little issues at the end, but it's turned out favorable, so we're pleased with that. And I hope to report a number certainly when we're done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners Reports, Commissioner Tyson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to pick up on something that the county manager brought up regarding the proclamation that was in the consent agenda, consent agenda, in reference to some of the abuse disorders. It's demonstrated that most of the heroin that comes into this country comes along the Mexican border. And recently, I was very disappointed to see that our Congressman Walter Jones voted against an appropriation to increase, to build another section of the, of the wall between the United States and Mexico. Very disappointed in that. To the extent that I believe that this, citizens in this county should, should certainly write his office and find out why he would have done that. Also, had a good talk with Scott Harrelson, our county health director the other day about the FQHC, and actually went to do a site visit, and they're doing very well there. They're serving a portion of the citizen of this county that ordinarily would probably end up in our emergency room. And this year, I just wanted to point out that our emergency room department visits are down. So I think that the FQHC is taking some of the population that was using the emergency room, which is the most expensive place on the planet to treat a non-emergency, which a lot of the people that were using it. And so I'm very proud to say that I think our FQHC is doing what probably the federal government intended for it to do, which was to provide health care to the population that ordinarily would not be served and could not be served by the private sector, you know, because they're, in many cases, they're no pay or sliding scale, in some cases, Medicaid. A lot of those are still difficult for the private sector to accommodate all the population that, that has that method of payment. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
You know, based on 1,600 people less, that would mean that they were able to see more people sooner than they had in the past. So that's an advantage.
The wait times are going down.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, two items, I will go a little bit further, talking about FQHC. This past week at our Board of Health meeting, there was quite much discussion about it. Several of our doctors that were there, present, also our representatives from the hospital began discussions. And they said that as a result, that FQHC in New Bern and Havelock, they have definitely not seen a reduction in clientele. One doctor said that, you know, any citizen that tries to call now to find a doctor, you, most of the time are on a waiting list. It's hard to find. And so the same, I won't go back to say what you said, I think you said it very eloquent. That is what we're seeing as far as competition with the private sector, it hasn't seemed to be that at the present time. And that was one concern I think this board had. And I think that all those from the hospital and to our other organizations, medical, private medical organizations, feel the same way. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, lastly, I mentioned it last time, but once again, I just let all of our citizens know that we will be having one of our district meetings in Cove City. It's hosted by myself and also jointly by the town of Cove City. It will be on Monday, September 11th, at 6:30. And so, it will be a prelude to the meeting that you have organized on the twenty-second, but if you will, please help. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, thanks, sir. Two things. Saturday, attended and worked the stuff the bus in Havelock. Great time, a lot of fun with a lot of volunteers that came out and supported that. It's still out there. If you still have, eager to donate to stuff the bus, you can drop the supplies off at any of your schools. They're always looking for it. And I'd like to thank everyone on this board that attended the conference during last week. I think a lot of good information, and a lot, a lot of good camaraderie was shared up there and enjoyed the time. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of things there. Myself and Jordan and I had a chat, attended the football game Friday night, was it Friday? And I was playing Wes Craven High School, and he made a phone call to one of our colleagues here, but I don't think he didn't like it. But anyway, we won big time.
Take the knife.
Well, it was a good game. It was a very good game. Also, I hope I'd be very lucky, with some lucky lot of things. It hits lottery Saturday, close to a billion dollars. And if I hit something like that, I'll make sure that I'm gonna take care of my colleagues here. And it's the truth now.
Can we have that writing?
Well, that's on tape. I'm hopefully I can try to give each one of you guys a million dollars, but I'm gonna give John Sampson two million, because he need more than y'all do. You agree, Jenny?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay? So hopefully it happens, and I'll keep my word, I see if I hit.
We certainly hope it too.
Okay. That's all. Just some states to laugh.
Commissioner Sampson?
If you could stop for just a minute. If anybody hasn't read the paper today, there was a hundred thousand dollar ticket given out in Havelock. Don't want to step forward yet, but...
Was it two hundred, two hundred?
No, just one in Havelock.
I thought it was a...
There's four total, but one in Havelock, at the gas station on the east end of town.
That's good. See, it's coming close, it's coming to hollow.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes. I'd like to say I was very enthused up there. Meeting that we had out there to the city, see that old garage where they're gonna put their building, education building out there for this reentry program. And we had a great crowd out there. It took a lot of hard work to get this thing done. I know I worked on trying to get these things together myself, but since, since the bill was passed by Congress in oh eight, and most, a lot of the other cities up there, Greensboro and Vinton selling, Raleigh, and also over there in Charlotte, they had received the funds, received funds to do their reentry program, I know at least six or seven years ago. And I kept talking about it, so by the last, we was able to get people together in agreement and begin to work together, and I'm, I think our program is on the top of the list. I think we are better organized than some of the other programs. So if we got all, got their health, health center, we got services, we got the judges, we got the law, we got some, everybody involved in this program, reentry program. Now, this gonna help a lot of kids, gonna help the county a great deal, because people won't have to be going into our hospitals, people won't have to be coming, going into our jails, using them for a storehouse to put military help and our people that's on drugs. We got a lot of peoples on drugs in Craven County. And I know this old part, that they were talking about, this is really strengthening drugs throughout the country. I heard it, women's over there in Cleveland, how bad it was in their area. They're spending a lot of money with this drug. Of course, we still got that cocaine and, and the little, what we call the light drugs, all drugs, the drugs that destroy people. We got a lot of military help. It's coming from a lot of these drugs also, so it's a lot of money being spent to try to help people who got on these drugs and who was at it at this time, and who's walking the street, don't know what they're doing. The citizens also standing in danger of some of these people. Some of these people collect, or commit a lot of crime, different kind of crime, breaking in the under ring, even murder. And this, it's a lot of money behind these drugs, but when the county and the city and the different offices begin to spend this money, it's coming from the tight sphere. So we're hoping that we continue to work together and get these things done, that we can see the benefit in our counties, in our state, because a lot of it's coming from our state government, a lot of it's coming from the federal government, trying to help take care of these people, and help fund these jails and prisons. And so, it's a great amount of money, you just can't imagine. When we begin to talk about peanuts, that's not peanuts that we're talking about now. The money's been spent. I hope we, some kind of way we could figure it up yearly, how much money's come from different organizations that take care of these drugs that's being spread out in our community. And that's the money, but the help wise and the people, the kids that's being destroyed by these drugs coming into our county, money being spent by our law enforcement trying to keep these drugs out of our county. So it's a great amount of money, and I think this is gonna be a successful program. I'm just so glad to see people working together, and it's a blessing that we was able to work together to get this program on the foundation that's on. And I think most people in this county is going along with supporting this program. We got a lot of volunteers, we got a lot of people that's interested in doing these things, so I'm just glad to see this happening in our society. And I just want to thank all of you, because it could not have been done by one person, but it takes the citizens, all the citizens of this county and Outland County to get this thing on the ball. And overall, now, I haven't heard much, they say of the reentry at, reentry in Pampico County, it's, it's supported this reentry, but I haven't heard a lot about Pampico. I did hear that they got a nice size grant for this program, so I don't know how it's going down there. I haven't, I haven't been able to talk to the reentry at, reentry in Pampico County. It's, it's supported this reentry, but I haven't heard a lot about Pampico. I did hear that they got a nice size grant for this program, so I don't know how it's going down there. I haven't, I haven't been able to talk to Greg concerning it, but Greg is doing outstanding job too. I'd just like to commend him for really taking the ball running with it and trying to bring these groups together. We have other people organizing groups, even helping this program. And I can see without doubt, I told some people in Cleveland that they're way behind us, because we own the ball, we are really running with this program. I think this is about all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Sampson. Vice Chairman, Tyson?
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to just mention again that your meeting on the twenty-second, Mr. Chairman, I was fortunate enough to have some time last week to sit in in the planning meeting with you, and, and I want to thank you very much for your willingness to spend so much time and focus on this issue of opioids. And of course, Commissioner Tyson's statement is right on the mind here with the problems that we're having from this international trade problem and it just coming across our borders, and we need to be doing everything that we possibly can to step up the effort to protect that border. On Wednesday of this week, August twenty-third, I will be holding a town hall meeting in River Bend at six PM. It'll go, excuse me, from, excuse me, from four to five PM, excuse me, four to five PM at River Bend. And then, I wanted to make commissioners aware of the seat-to-table event that's gonna be held down at the Crystal Coast Convention Center. Again, that's the fundraiser for Allies for Cherry Point tomorrow. That will be held Thursday, September seventh at six PM. And if you can, I've got tickets available for that, if you wouldn't mind buying them from me, because I've gotta sell them. I greatly appreciate it. But again, that's six o'clock down...
What day is September the...
That's Thursday, September the seventh.
How much a ticket is?
Tickets are seventy-five dollars each. The food is all being provided from local...
It's a toe-deep.
...providers, and will be cooked there on premise. And I think there's gonna be a few of the craft beers that are produced in the area that will also be down there that evening. And, Mr. Chairman, it might be a glass of wine for you. So I would hope that everybody be able to make that. So again, my two, my two little issues are August twenty-third, this Wednesday, town hall meeting in River Bend at four o'clock, and then September seventh, the seat-to-table event at the Crystal Coast Convention Center. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
No, I'm glad all the commissioners, many of the commissioners have talked about the opioid problem that we have, that we've got a real crisis out there. And we have a crisis in our own county. In two thousand and fourteen, we had a hundred and twenty percent of people dying or being involved with opioid. And in two thousand and fifteen, that percentage is up to two hundred and fifty percent. And looking at other states and counties where this opioid crisis has been, it starts to triple after that second, fifteen and sixteen. So, it is important. We're holding a meeting on the twenty-second from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. We have invited approximately over a hundred and thirty legislators, legislators are invited, and also municipality elected officials amongst hospital personnel and the sheriff's office and the New Bern Police Department. And we've had a few meetings on this now, and I have to congratulate the county manager and county clerk for the time that they've put into this as long with some other people. But I think it's, it's coming at a right opportune time. The president spoke about it, and a number of governors have spoken about it. And the thing that, it started out, it starts out as an epidemic and then becomes a crisis. We really are at the epidemic station now, and we want to make sure it don't become a crisis in our county. So, I'm looking forward to conducting that meeting. In addition to that, if I can find my booklet here, I think I put it away, but I can't think I can talk without that. I had a, I think you all had a copy of a letter from Gerwood, from the Director of Transportation, Highway Seventy, in which he mentioned going over the problem we've had from hurricanes, and I believe it was somewhere around four-point-eight billion dollars that was spent in Matthew. And a lot of this hurricane problem had come from dams that started up in Raleigh, Durham area. And the Army Engineers were involved in this twenty, twenty-five years ago, and actually, instead of reducing it, they added one. We've got a resolution now out, and the Highway Seventy Committee, which consists of five counties, and Kinston being one of the counties that really got hit heavy, hope to have some results on reducing this flow, at least have some talks and plans. So I just want to mention that, because I know Commissioner Jones has been involved in that. Solid waste facility, which is Kuswama here, and we have in our county, there was a bill for the flow of garbage going to other facilities. However, that bill was never brought up in, in the House, but now it's been put into an environmental bill fifty-six. And in that bill though, so far, it looks like they're exempting our Kuswama from those rules as far as the flow of garbage. So, if any of you have a chance to talk to your legislators, please make sure that they understand that's very important to us. With that, I want to thank everybody for the meeting today, and we'll take a, before we go into a work session on animal ordinance and court transportation, we'll take a twenty-minute break.
I think it was sixty-three to nothing.
It was a big one, I recall that. Three twenty-six remaining in the ballgame. It's gonna be third and six for the Cardinals. They're in four-down territory. Adams and the shotgun split backs. Could be max protection. It's gonna be a three-receiver pattern. He rolls right, there's a flag on the play. He's knocked out on the sideline by, let's see if we can get a number there.
Rashid McCoy with the hit.
Rashid McCoy, a big player for the Bears. I tell you what, Rashid is a good football player, and he put a whale of a hit on Xelman Adams.
Got a headache.
On that sideline. The flag was earlier than the hit. We'll see what the flag's all about.
It wasn't illegal, I think, by that hit.
Oh, no. There was no flag thrown on the hit. It's illegal procedure on Jacksonville. I believe you'll see the Bears will take that penalty.
Okay, he must be talking to the other ref, because I know you can't be, refs shouldn't be talking to Jacksonville coaches down here.
Illegal procedure, five-yard step off against the Cardinals. It's gonna be repeat third down, and it's gonna be third and eleven for the Cardinals. Third and eleven for the Cardinals. You got Colt Jackson, is it Jackson, Colt Jackson back in the game for the Cardinals. Hit straight, drop back, he throws left, little flare pass sniffed out by eighty-four for the Bears. Donovan Revard drops the receiver for no gain.
Yeah, watch out for that name. I love that Revard kid, he's, he's a stud.
Great read on that pass and, and coverage. Let's see, Jacksonville brings in...